We'll call the order, the Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, June 11th, 2024. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located in the north wall of the legislative chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible)
We'll start with our Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, June 4th, 2024, and B, a call for a meeting set Tuesday, June 25th, 2024, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of augmented property to tax rules or increased value on property. Do I have a motion, a second?
(inaudible).
Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Our next items of business are the resolutions, resolutions C through F. We can take them in the block if the board desires. Motion's approved, C through F, second by Morgan. The motion was by Rogers. Discussion on any items C through F from either commissioners or public. If not, we shall vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have an appeal, item G, appeal of rejection of homestead exemption for Jean Gunnel's. Apologies if I mispronounced that. Jackson at 4416 Pratt Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68111. Mr. Goodwilly.
Commissioners, good morning. Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. The fact pattern here is that Ms. Gunnel's Jackson was a resident of the home -- oh, I'm sorry. Are you not? Apologize. Ms. Jackson lived in the home with her mother, who was the owner, for the previous five years. Mother passed away and had been receiving homestead exemption. Ms. Gunnel's Jackson applied in her own right, and she's simply not the record owner of the house. I think she was laboring under the impression that her mom had set up a trust or some sort of mechanism to transfer the house to her, and it never happened. And so where we're at now is we sent her the denial letter because the statute is quite clear about owning the property, and she has filed this appeal. Let me anticipate a question. The value of the house is $91,900. The tax at the current rate, less an educated guess about the property tax credit that will be applied in the fall, her tax bill would be about $1,939 if she were to fall out of homestead. As an aside, I think she could probably qualify on her own. She simply does not own the home.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwilly. We'll take any questions, if there are any. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Mike, she mentions in her correspondence, "I should be considered as an occupant eligible for the tax exemption." Is there such an exemption?
Well, there really isn't. The statute requires owner occupancy. There are some instances where you don't have to actually be the record owner. The property could be in a trust, but there are some very specific requirements for a trust. The person that put the property in the trust has to be able to either revoke the trust or remove property from it and change its ownership, or there must be a life estate reserved. And there is no trust. There isn't anything that conveys any of those things to Ms. Gunnel's Jackson.
Okay. Under this item G, it says, "Action requested. Grant taxpayer request."
Yes, the taxpayer is protesting our letter denying their homestead application. So what the taxpayer is asking for is for you folks to grant her homestead exemption.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Commissioner Kavanaugh, I thought we had changed that to say the property owner is requesting that the exemption be granted or something like that. Because I agree, the way we have it written is kind of confusing, like we're agreeing with the individual. But so I will double-check that next time to make sure we're stating it in a manner that reflects that this is what the owner is -- or the protester is requesting, not necessarily the county.
Okay. So, does she need us to deny her request in order to appeal to, like, Turk or something like that?
I guess she could. The Turk takes a hell of a long time. I don't think that they would view this much differently. Her best avenue, if you were of a mind, to say, "Well, as the caretaker and somebody who's lived there for five years, we'd like to see our way clear to help this person," would be grant this and then put it on the state to take it up.
You mean, grant her request?
Grant her request. The Department of -- that's if that's what you want to do. The Department of Revenue has the ability to further deal with these and contest these on their own. Sometimes they do when the board grants one that's a little out of the way, and other times they don't. So I can't really predict. But I think putting it on this taxpayer to take it to Turk, if what you really want to do is help them, all that does is kick the can several years down the road for her.
So if I understand it, she's living with her mom. Her mom passes away.
That's right.
Recently.
Either late last year or early this year.
Yeah. So the estate's probably in probate? It hasn't been?
I don't even know what their situation is. Mom had dementia, from what I understand, and had promised the daughter that, "Oh, I've got this in trust for you. I'm transferring it to you." And then none of it ever happened. So whether they're far enough down the track to do any kind of estate administration on this or to have gotten anywhere on it, I don't know.
Thank you.
We'll jump to Commissioner Boyle.
And Mike, I was just curious, have there been conversations with the person who lives there about the path to ownership so that possibly they could apply for a decision?
Yes. Yes, we have talked about that getting straightened out so that she could apply for the next tax year. Yes.
The next tax year?
Yeah.
I know in the past, we've just deferred it for a month or something or a couple weeks.
Well, that's not really going to help her very much. The statute talks about owning the property as of January 1st of the year for which you're applying, and that ship has, you know, left port. So the best that could probably happen is if she gets the title squared away, then she would apply and qualify for 2025.
Okay. And then if your other thought was to help the taxpayers approve it and then send the -- let the state sort it out, that sounds like to me we would have -- we would be doing that a lot more than just today.
I can't officially advocate for that, but there are certainly instances when we get homestead applications where, if we were in equity court, I think we'd certainly lean toward finding a way to grant it. I've often thought that there ought to be sort of one wild card exemption to the rules for homestead that would enable folks to do equity, but that kind of becomes very discretionary, and you always get a little bit nervous about that.
Okay. I think it's -- I think -- I feel for someone like this, obviously, if they themselves may be eligible for homestead exemption and they are just caught up in the paperwork of an estate, you know, it's almost -- because estates take a while to settle, as we all know. So it's almost like we're punishing this person for not being able to settle the estate quickly and get ownership transferred over. So trying to figure out just a responsible way to rectify this for this taxpayer. Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgeson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike, did you happen to look to see if she was the owner, if the paperwork was done?
No, no, no. It hasn't been. She's not the record owner. There's been--
No, if. I said if. It was.
Oh.
Would she qualify?
Yeah, yeah. I think I mentioned that, yes, I think I mentioned that had -- if she were actually the record owner, she would qualify.
You did say that. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Then I would make a motion to grant so that she could move along with trying to get the paperwork completed and let the state decide which way it should go.
Motion by Borgeson, official second by Boyle, additional by Morgan. So we have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion on this motion? On the motion itself, yeah. Commissioner Rogers?
Mike, is this some communication you do to her? Because before it got passed, I guess we passed this. The state gets it. There's a chance the state could say no.
Yes. We've had this discussion with her.
She knows that.
She came to our office, and we kind of walked her through what her situation was and that, you know, her avenue is to file an appeal with you folks, and that if you granted it, there still was the potential for the state to say no. Yes.
So she knows.
We always had that conversation with folks.
I'm fine.
Okay. Anybody else on the motion? Larry?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Seems to me like there's an awful lot of gray area here. I'd like to open discussion because my understanding of a trust is it's -- it might be a revocable trust. Therefore, he would not have the opportunity to make his own decision on that exemption. It's intended to -- he has said in the past, "It's intended to go with the owner of the property." Well, if the daughter is now the owner of the property and she qualifies otherwise, why would you reject it in the first place? It's part of the trust, possibly, but he doesn't know the answer to that, I guess. And then for him to say, "Well, it'll be this much less after the property tax credit, after she files her tax -- state tax return," that's kind of ingenuous. What is the property tax on that $96,000 today? Not after the state possibly gives her a refund on it. He meant his words, and I think the intent of government is to not meant his words. Now, this lady -- I'll kick me out if you want. This lady is not an Islamist, but he grants -- look it up. In world history, Islam is not a true religion.
That's not the topic on the agenda right now.
He grants property tax credit to an Islamic center.
That's not the topic on the agenda. Thank you. All right. So on the motion itself, I'll just mention briefly on my end, I'm going to support the motion. I do feel for the individual as well, though I am assuming that within the next year, the title will get settled. Because if this person comes again next year and it's still not in their name, then I might have an issue with it. But for now, I definitely will support the motion. Thank you. Any other comments on this matter? If not, we'll vote.
Can I include adjournment?
Oh, yes. Commissioner Borgeson?
Can I include adjournment?
Oh, including adjournment, yes. If motioners are okay with that. Good. All right. Motion, including adjournment.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Normally, we would do Board of Corrections today, but that has been postponed to Tuesday, June 25th, 2024, by request of the director. So we're going to go ahead and jump into Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are 1A and B, A being the approval of minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, June 4th, 2024, B being the approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, June 18th, 2024. Do I have a motion, a second?
Second.
Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda, which includes items A through H. Do I have a motion, a second for discussion?
Second.
Motion to approve by Rogers, second by Morgan. Are there any items one would like to discuss on the consent agenda? If not, we'll vote.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes. Oh, yes, the correction.
Yep. Yeah, Dan Ash Douglas County Clerk, on item D, the agenda request form has a correct date, but the resolution actually says June 30th, 2022. So just the motion and second, if it would include adjusting the resolution to say June 30th, 2025.
Is that good with the motion or second there?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. So approval of consent agenda, including the typo revision in item D. We'll go ahead and vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our recognitions and proclamations, items A and B under Section 3. The first is a recognition -- a resolution recognizing Deputy County Administrator Kim Avicati, which we have a resolution to read. But first, do we get a motion, a second?
Second.
Motion by Rogers, second by Borgeson. And let me go ahead and read the resolution here. All right. It reads, "Whereas the Coalition of Juvenile Justice is a network of more than 15,000 youth justice practitioners and allies across the United States that advocates policy changes at the federal level and empowers its members to do the same at the state level with its mission to prevent young people from becoming involved in the courts and to uphold the highest standards of care when youth are charged with wrongdoing and enter the juvenile justice system. And whereas the Coalition of Juvenile Justice awards the Marion Mattingle Lifetime Achievement Award to recognize an individual who has demonstrated an exemplary commitment to the reform of juvenile justice system and advocacy for the cause of youth who are involved in it and who has given a life of service through dedication and achievement in the field of juvenile justice as an agent for change and a person who challenges the conventionality of the system. And whereas Kim Avicati has dedicated over 30 years to improving child welfare and juvenile justice -- juvenile services as a defense attorney, guardian at Lydum, prosecutor, director of the Nebraska Office of Juvenile Services, director of the Nebraska Foster Care Review Office, and Douglas County Deputy Administrator for Juvenile Services. And whereas, in her role for Douglas County, she leads a team who has been able to secure over $9 million in new grant opportunities for the community's juvenile justice efforts, worked with local philanthropic and governmental agencies to drive juvenile justice reform, create and maintain funding for the nationally-recognized Juvenile Assessment Center, successfully diverting thousands of youth from the juvenile justice system, and enhance behavioral and mental health services for youth at DCYC. And whereas, Kim Avicati was nominated by her staff and awarded the 2024 Marion Mattingle Lifetime Achievement Award by the Coalition of Justice -- of Juvenile Justice at the CJJ Annual Conference on May 30th, 2024, in Washington, DC. Now therefore, be it resolved by this Board of Commissioners of Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby extends its congratulations and thanks to Kim B. Avicati for her exemplary leadership for Douglas County as a Deputy County Administrator for Juvenile Services, dated this day. All right. So, Kim, a few words?
I was deeply honored and humbled to receive this national award from the Coalition of Juvenile Justice. I think what was the most precious to me, it was our own staff that had nominated -- had nominated me for that award, which to me means more than actually receiving the more -- the award itself. But thanks to the board for recognizing, you know, this award that is very precious to me. I think the resolution says it all. I think even though we have made such positive progress over the past four or five years, we still have work to do, and we're going to still keep moving forward. So thanks again for this incredible recognition of this award, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your dedication and --
(applause)
We appreciate you as well, Kim. Thank you. And we do have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have a recognition -- oh, excuse me, a resolution recognizing Joe Lorenz for outstanding 13-year career at Douglas County as our Budget and Finance Director. Do I have a motion, second for the resolution? Motion by Rogers, second by Friend. And Joe, before you talk, let me go ahead and read what we are dedicating to you today. It reads, "Whereas Mr. Joe Lorenz has served as the Director of Finance and Budget for Douglas County since February of 2011, leading the county's finance function with exemplary dedication and skill. And whereas during his tenure, Mr. Lorenz has been responsible for the annual budget, long-term financing, pension issues, and financial systems, ensuring the county's financial stability and growth. And whereas Mr. Lorenz brought to Douglas County a wealth of experience, having previously served as a Finance Director at Ag Processing Incorporated in Omaha for eight years and in various financial positions at the Quaker Oats Company in Chicago for nearly 20 years. And whereas, a Chicago native, Mr. Lorenz earned his MBA in Finance and Accounting from the University of Chicago Graduate School of Business and a BBA from the University of Wisconsin-Madison, laying a strong educational foundation for his distinguished career. And whereas, Mr. Lorenz's significant accomplishments include overseeing the financial planning for the Justice Center project, one of the largest construction projects in Douglas County's history, and skillfully navigating the financial challenges of the pandemic, managing hundreds of millions of dollars in CARESAC and ARPA funds for the county. And whereas, Mr. Lorenz has been recognized by his colleagues for his excellent budget forecasting abilities, his deep understanding of the county's financial needs, his collaborative spirit, and his innovative approaches to helping departments manage their budgets effectively and efficiently. And whereas, Mr. Lorenz is looking forward to his well-deserved retirement and returning home near Chicago to spend time with his friends and family. Now therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby recognizes Joe Lorenz for his 13 years of outstanding service and congratulates him on his retirement, dated this day, June 11." All right. Joe, a few words?
Yeah. Thank you, Roger. You know, when you have a resolution like this, this -- when you kind of wish that your parents were still here, because my dad would have really enjoyed hearing it, and my mother would have believed it. Uh-huh. Yeah. But it's -- when people ask me about, you know, how it was working in county government, I always say, "It's not always fun, but it was always interesting." And I really believe that. You know, as I sit here, I think of the things that we've done over the 13 years. You know, we -- on capital projects, we did the Fitzgerald Home, we did the Juvenile Justice Center across the street. Then, of course, we had, you know, a lot of involvement and spent a lot of time on spending $700 million worth of federal government money on CARES and ARPA, which was an interesting process. So it was -- to me, it was always an interesting job. But there were other parts that I enjoyed. I mean, certainly one part, you know, as being chair of the Finance Committee for many years. The co-chair -- I was -- I wasn't the chair, I was the representative, but the co-chairs were Mike Boyle and PJ Morgan. And so we used to have Finance Committee meetings, the three of us, which I used to call Mayor's Tales, because they were both great storytellers. I'd have a certain agenda on, and we kind of always would get derailed off the agenda as Mike Boyle and PJ would tell their stories. And that was always a highlight to me because they were, like I said, great storytellers. Another thing that was always interesting as we sit in these meetings, you know, I used to sit up there next to Patrick. And, you know, on Monday Night Football, you have like an alternate broadcast with Peyton and Eli Manning. Well, Patrick and I used to sit up there and talk to each other and have like an alternate interpretation of what was going on at the county board meeting, which we never told you about. So those were highlights. And like I say, at the end of the day, I really enjoyed the 13 years. I enjoyed working with you. I always thought that what we were trying to do, we were trying to do best for the population and the voters of Douglas County. You know, coming, growing up in the city of Chicago, you know, I remember our precinct captain, 50th Ward Democratic Organization. I was always familiar with local government, but I really thought here in the county, we really did work for the best interest of the population. And that was very important to me. And so I'm here today, and my wife Beth and my son Graham is here. And Graham just graduated from Notre Dame, and he's going to go to New York and join his brother in the investment banking industry in Manhattan. And so he'll be leaving soon, and that's one of the reasons I can retire, is that he's my youngest son. I got no more college tuitions. So Beth and I have bought a house in Chesterton, Indiana, which is about 50 miles outside Chicago, but it's right near the Indiana Dune State Park. It's on this pond, so it's kind of like we're going back to Golden Pond, and we're going to move back to the general area where we have a lot of friends and family. So with that, thank you for everything.
Thank you so much, Joe.
(applause)
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joe, before I vote for this, I have a couple of questions I have to ask. No, I'm just -- Joe, I've been here almost four years now, and I've forgotten a lot of what you taught me. But I don't think I could have done this job without you here. Not -- well, I could have done it, but it would have been a disaster. Maybe the argument is that it's been a disaster anyway, but I appreciate the help and the guidance and you making this type of process understandable for somebody like me. So I consider you a friend, and thanks. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Well, kind of a sad day. I've enjoyed. I remember when we interviewed for the job, and luckily, I was involved in that, and certainly, it was an easy choice picking you. And you gave over 100% always and gave us great guidance. And I've been lucky enough to -- our chairperson at that time, Marion Borgeson, and Chris, and Roger to be on the Finance Committee as co-chairman with someone always for the 13 years, and greatly appreciate the contribution you've made to Douglas County and just the way you handle things. And I want to thank Beth for allowing you to go through some stress from time to time with us, and appreciate the fact that you invited all of us to your new home for a cookout. That was really nice of you two to do that. And I'm sorry to hear you talk about the only reason you retired. You should have spent an extra year, Graham, at Notre Dame so that you would have been with us a little longer. But anyway, I wish you the best of health and happiness for you and your family. And the two sons are going to do unbelievable with that credential from Notre Dame. That's unreal. And get to join New York. So thank you so much for your excellent service and always really directing us in the right direction throughout the 13 years that you worked with us. So take care and really appreciate you as a friend.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
So, Joe, I always felt like I knew you before I met you because, because of all of the shenanigans and stories that my dad would tell. As you know, I can only imagine what your meetings were on the, as the Finance Committee with, with my dad and PJ, because as you know, my dad never let the truth get in the way of a good story.
And a great storyteller he was.
That's right. So, so I do appreciate getting to know you over the past couple of years. In addition, I really want to express my happiness for your family, for Beth especially, because I know that it can be kind of a long haul to get to this point. So, so anyway, congratulations to you and your, your family and enjoy retirement. You've earned it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Rogers?
Just wanted to add quick, Joe, it's been, it's been good. When you first of all, first arrived and evolved to learn the local politics here and maneuvering there. And I just say, it's been, other than your affinity for the Chicago Cubs, it's been a great, it's been a great, great ride. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, just, I thought the resolution was spot on, but one thing that Joe, another thing that Joe was great about during his time here was the opportunities to refinance our bonds. I mean, there were several times where we probably saved, not probably, I mean, we did save, I didn't tally it up, but it was millions over lives, the life cycle of bonds by refinancing them and saving tons of, on interest. And I thought you and, you were always great on that. So.
Thanks, Tim.
Commissioner Morgan?
One more thing. I'd like to put Lori on the spot as I usually do. Lori, as our new Finance Chairman, I know that you have some words because you, you've said some things to me about how helpful Joe's been in that transition. So.
Absolutely. I was gonna try to hit my button in a minute, but I wanted to wait for all the Commissioners to talk. No, over the time that Joe and I have worked together, well, a couple of things. First of all, he has truly been kind of a watchdog for the taxpayers, but always making sure that there was enough funds for the departments to run and, and, you know, successfully run the county. But personally speaking, he's been a fantastic mentor and I, I couldn't ask for anybody to do a more easy transition and be as helpful as possible to ensure my success. So, I truly, truly appreciate that. And I've got big shoes to fill here. So, I'm hoping that, that I can live up to, to the standard that Joe set. So, thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Just say a few words. So, really, the most important part of your accomplishment in your 13 years is that you made my job easier. So, thank you for that. But, you know, as I said a couple of weeks ago, I, you know, you can kind of summarize your tenure as it was the best of times, it was the worst of times. Because there was, there was times when you wanted to pull your hair out and it's amazing to me that you still have most of your hair.
It's gray now, though.
I unfortunately do not. But you always seem to just figure it out and make it work and make our jobs easier because of your ability to find a way to plug the holes that needed to be plugged and to forecast what our needs are in our budget, in our pension, find creative ways to booster our health insurance fund, our pension fund, and in our budget. So, thank you for the 13 years. I'm jealous. And hopefully I won't be too, too far behind you. Maybe, we'll see. But thank you again for your service.
Thanks, Patrick. You've been a great boss.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Joe, I just wanted to echo the sentiments that you've heard here and thank you for your years of great public service. I also want to share congratulations to your prepster son on his great accomplishments. As a, as an Irishman myself, I always salute the fighting Irish. So, good luck in New York City. And as a Mets fan, you and I have shared many interesting conversations about
A lot of anguish.
National League Baseball. But it sounds like you might be getting back there just in the right time. You guys are doing very well this year. So, good luck with those Cubbies this fall. And enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure working with you.
Commissioner Borgerson?
Mr. Chair, and thanks, Joe, for your service. And enjoy retirement. And that goes for Beth. This is probably the most precious time you guys will have together. And so, really eat it all up and enjoy it.
Thank you.
All right. Enjoy retirement, Joe. Thank you so much for your service. Enjoy retirement, Beth, as well. And congrats on the graduation, Graham.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll vote on that resolution.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Commissioner?
Yes.
One more thing. There's one more thing that I know Joe really wanted, and that's a photo op.
Oh, yeah. Let's get one.
So, Joe, come on down.
Hi, Dave. Your family come down?
Yeah, you guys come. You're more than welcome to come, Patrick.
I'm sure they'll capture me somehow in the, in the background.
one.
Thank you, everyone.
Your Notre Dame love speech.
Next, we have our section on presentations. There was a request for a presentation to the Board today on a turnback tax project. Mr. Har will be coming up to explain.
Burke Har, 6457 Francis Street, Suite 100. Thank you for letting me make a presentation here today. If I could, before we begin, just take a note of personal privilege. 25 years ago this summer, I first met the grizzled veteran, Kim Havocati. I started in the County Attorney's Office and was always intimidated by her. So, to see her getting her just deserved stay is great. And then, obviously, I got to know Joe during the whole COVID and it's just been wonderful to get to know him and all the great things that he's done for the county. So, I'd like to thank both of them for all they've done. I am here on a unique and new project. I'm here on behalf of Elite Volleyball. And on the Zoom, we have Tony Carl and then who is the Executive Director of Elite Volleyball. And then, we also have Jeff Week here as well. We are embarking on something new, which is, for the first time, this county can indirectly collect sales tax. What it is, this is a turnback tax. This was originally, as some may remember, started with the CHI Center, which was where, the, the idea behind this is you have a facility that is creating economics development for an area and helping an area strive. And it should, it's only fair that as a result, some of the, that economic development, some of the proceeds from that, in this case, state sales tax, is used to pay for that project. And so, that was originally started with CHI. It's since been used with Lincoln for the Pinnacle Bank Arena, Ralston. And what we're doing now is taking it to the next level of youth athletics. And when you think youth athletics, probably one of the most premier, or if not the premier, I shouldn't say premier, elite volleyball, or elite youth sports is elite volleyball. And so, what we're looking to do here is to, this costs the county nothing, and I'll go through the presentation, but just a quick overview. We are looking to collect, the county would collect the state sales tax. And then, would use those proceeds that they collect to provide for a youth athletic center. And I'll go through it. So, just quickly, a history on Nebraska Elite Volleyball. It is a 501(c)(3). It's a nonprofit. It was founded in 2001. And many of you are probably familiar with them. They also run the President's Day Weekend Volleyball Tournament, which is huge. On here, it says, over 50,000 visitors come that weekend. So, it, it has a great, I have a friend who has a hotel. He talks about January and February are just terrible. And all they do is look forward to this tournament. So, as they try to get through it. Currently, Elite Volleyball has a facility. It's on about 203rd and Dodge, the UBT Center. Huge, it's massive. My kid plays out there for OSA. It is amazing. They fill that thing out right now currently, seven days a week. And it's, it is, it's 134,000 square feet. It's huge. It's massive. And there are tournaments there every weekend. By any complaint against it, it's so popular, it's hard to find parking out there. But it is absolutely amazing. It has six volleyball courts, eight volleyball courts as well. And we have it on here. It has a lounge. It has a training facility and a commons area out front for kids to hang out in between games when they aren't watching. And it's just an amazing facility, well-run. And so, yeah, it, it, like I said, and you'll see on the next page that what its current usage is, I mean, it is full, two capacity. And so, the, what they're looking to do is to add additional courts. And so, this new facility is, one of the areas that we're really looking for is in volleyball and basketball still. And then, we're going to also add pickleball, right? I don't know if any of you guys have been over to Iowa West. They have all three of those. It is absolutely amazing how that facility is full. Facility at 208th is full. And so, there's just a pent-up demand for additional youth athletics out there and facilities. And so, what we're looking to do, the, the new facility will again continue to draw national, regional, and local sports. Not just tournaments, but ways for kids to play together. I don't know if any of you saw during, when Pace was down and not available, the youth crime rates spiked. And you go talk to anyone on Omaha Police Department, especially those in the gang unit, and they will tell you, hey, when we got rid of organized sports, there was a direct effect. And I can tell you on my own behalf, with two kids involved in youth athletics right now, when they aren't doing it, they're like dogs just looking. I mean, they just, they're, they're squirrely, they're angst, and they're on their computers. This gets kids off their computers and out talking to each other and talking to people from different backgrounds, right? So, it's a, it's a wonderful thing. The, the new facility that we're looking at here will have, again, have basketball. It'll draw about 550 participants, 60 teams that will compete across the country out of those 550 participants, and then run events 39 out of 52 weekends. So, again, tournament's very full. The volleyball facility, there's a picture I have, if you want to turn, of that. And on volleyball, it's even more impressive. The volleyball will be run, I mean, over 1,000 participants, 48 teams, and indoor events 24 weekends, and then outdoor events, eight weekends a year. What I didn't mention, I mentioned volleyball, basketball, pickleball. I forgot the one I'm kind of most excited about, which is sand volleyball, right? There are kids who just do sand volleyball now. There are kids who do both, but there are kids who just do sand volleyball. And there are scholarships out there for it now. So, very excited about that. The new facility will be 175,000 square feet. So, a little bit smaller, but it'll have 12 volleyball courts, six basketball, 36 pickle, and then, like I said, the two indoor sand courts plus the training room, meeting rooms, and specialized equipment. And the next I have, which is the target demographic, the market demand, there, there's no doubt we need this. And if anyone has questions about that, I can go into greater detail by seeing I'm kind of going long. This will be a state-of-the-art facility. We're working with Nebraska Elite Volleyball. We work with the President's Day. We're working with, you know, the visitor and tourist groups in here. But what I really want to get to is, and then there's the financial review, but what I really want to get to is the Sports Facility Financing Assistance Act, which is why I'm here today, to explain that. And what that is, like I stated earlier, what it is, is no, no county dollars are expanded, expended. It is all state dollars. So, the state dollars will come to the county. At that point, the county will work with us. We will co-apply Elite Volleyball and County Board. We will apply for the state sales pack tax, which then we get the state sales tax from a 600-yard area around the new facility. We will then, the Elite Volleyball will enter into a rental agreement, a lease agreement with the county. That lease agreement will be for, the, the lease agreement will be for use of the facility by the public, the general public from, and we can negotiate. All this is open negotiation. But basically, from 6:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon. And then also to provide free parking for the public as well. So, they can use the, youth can come in. So, it's not just for those individuals who are in the organized sports, but anyone can come in and use the sand volleyball, the pickleball, the basketball, and the volleyball courts. There really aren't a lot of athletic facilities out in Western, Western Douglas County.
Hello?
Yeah, for those on Zoom, could you please mute yourselves? Thank you. I did that once. And so, it'll be an athletic facility that'll be available in Western Douglas County. We would have that leased for 10 years during the term of when we're getting the sales turned back. Okay. So, I, and, and there is absolutely zero cost, like I said, to the county. Now, what we are looking to do is there are some new facilities that are coming in Western Douglas County. Those facilities will help pay for the lease. We get the sales turn back from anything that's created 24 months before, 48 months after the facility or after we do this resolution, which is why we're here today. So that we make sure we get the maximum amount of sales tax. If, and most likely, there will be development that occurs after this facility, as a result of this facility, there will be more funds available than is necessary to pay the lease. What at that point I would like to see is that those, those dollars, again, they flow to the county. There is a lease. What, we will go down to the state and make an application. When we make that application, it would be for scholarship for young kids to participate in other organized sports, athletic events, similar to Pace or YMCA. Or, again, that would be up to the County Board to decide what those, where those dollars go. The statute allows for the promotion of organized sports. And when you say promotion, I don't mean marketing, but for the enjoyment enhancement of that. And that was the intent of the legislation. So, that's what we'd like to see, how we'd like to see the money flow. What we're here today to do is to, one, inform you. Two, we'll be back in two weeks with a resolution and more than willing to answer any questions you guys might have. But in that resolution, we need it done by July 1. And that's an important date so that we have a public announcement so that we can get the maximum amount of sales tax out of, I guess we can say it's going to be a Costco that opens July 1. And we want to be able to grab the sales tax from that. And so, that's our intent, why we're here so quickly. I've had a chance to speak with most of you, but not all of you, about this. And then, what, once we have that resolution, we'll do a joint application. We'll enter into contract negotiations with your permission, with the County Attorney, to put, pen to paper of what this would look like, how that resolution, how the money would flow. And then, we would do an application down to the state. That state, there's a committee, and that committee is made up of five individuals. The Governor, the, well, obviously Jim Pillen, or Governor Pillen, the State Treasurer, Tom Breezy, someone from accounting, which is a woman, Melissa Ruff, Chairperson of Nebraska Investment Council, which is Gail Warner Robinson, and a professor of economics who is appointed by the Coordinating Commission for Post-Secondary Education for a two-year term. Currently, because there hasn't, this committee hasn't met for a while, they don't have anybody. But in meeting with, or in conversations with the Coordinating Commission, their intent is to appoint an individual named Eric Thompson, who I think you all are familiar with, who does a lot of work on economic development through the University of Nebraska. That application has to be approved by a majority, which one of those three must be the Governor. And then, once that is agreed, And then, once that is agreed too, then we can start receiving the turned-back dollars. One other thing I did leave out that I think is very important is, I keep saying there is zero liability. We will negotiate this, so there is not a liability to the county. We will negotiate that lease, so there is not a liability for the county. We will also work with you to make sure that you, this county receives an administrative fee for all the work that you guys are doing on this application. So, again, zero liability, we're taking on all of the liability. But we do think this is a great opportunity and a great program that the legislature passed a bill on this year, LB 1197. So, we're very excited about it. It's a great way of increasing youth athletics, not just in Douglas County, but across the state, and even the region. And in addition, a way to bring in more revenue for the Visitor Improvement Bureau as well. Board. With that, I would entertain any questions. Like I said, we have Jeff here, and then we have the executive director on Zoom.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and jump to dialogue, starting with Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Burke. I had the opportunity to chat with you a little bit about this. And the reason it's on the agenda and not through committee is because of the timeline.
Yes.
So, July 1 is just around the corner. We're not meeting one of the months, or one of the weeks in June. So, you know, it's here for you to present. As far as the current facility, I do want to give kudos to the elite organization. My granddaughter actually has played volleyball out at the current facility, and it is a wow. It's very well-run, tournaments, no problems whatsoever, very professional people. So, I just wanted to say that as well. My question, though, is twofold. You did say that if, if there were developments that occurred after this is set up that would bring in sales tax, we would be able to capture that sales tax as well within that 600 yards, correct?
Correct, for 48 months after.
48 months after, okay. Second question is, what happens if all of the commercial is annexed?
Great question. So, what happens is if, let's say, the city takes this over.
Exactly.
This is similar to what's going on in Ralston. The Ralston Arena is funded by a state's sales tax from a Menards, or that's the largest. And that Menards is actually in the city of Omaha. So, you have the city of Omaha, state's sales tax going to the city of Ralston to pay off the bonds on the Ralston Arena. So, would have zero effect. The money would still flow to the county, and the county would still be able to expend those funds. So, thank you for asking that. I forgot to bring that up.
Well, and that would be, I think, explicit in any agreement.
Yes.
That is created if we move forward with this.
That is correct. We would make sure it is, but I think presidents would say this is how it is, because again, it's the state's sales tax. But we would definitely, I see Ms. Yurk writing notes right now. So, yes, we will make sure that is in there. Thank you. And thank you for putting, getting me on the agenda, so I could answer questions outside, a little bit outside of the norm, so I really appreciate that.
No, and again, I think this is a phenomenal opportunity for Douglas County as a whole, but as you said, for many outside of Douglas County. And so, I'm excited to see progress forward with this.
Thank you.
We'll jump to Commissioner Boyle.
Yeah, thanks again for that presentation, Burke. This sounds like a, kind of a win-win situation.
Right.
Now, I just need some help if you could just educate me on a couple of things. One is, you just gave the example of Ralston and their arena. It kind of surprises me that the state would be receptive to redirecting funds away from themselves into these types of projects. Do you have other examples? And do you feel like this committee would be apt to approve something like this?
So, there are others that are coming across the state. When this bill was passed this year, LB 1197, there were others who testified. There are other athletic facilities that are currently under construction as well, or under consideration, including in Grand Island, Elkhorn, there's one in North Omaha. So, there are continuing, there will be more coming online, and the state sees the importance of youth athletics. And they also see the economic development that comes from youth athletics. I'd probably spend more money than I'd like to admit traveling to tournaments. And it'll be nice to be able to have some here.
Right. The other question is, and again, this is, I need some education here, exactly why do we need, do you need the county involved?
Sorry.
Why does the county need to be involved?
Oh, because, great question. I did miss that, sorry about that. The reason we are, and this is the first time the county is doing it, traditionally, these partnerships have been with cities. Well, we've expanded it, because the area where we are looking to do it is outside of the city of Omaha. However, it is within the ETJ, the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city. So, while we are not part of the city, we do have to go through city zoning. But we, the city couldn't collect in that area, the county can.
I see. So, we collect the taxes that goes to the state, which is then goes back to?
Sorry, state collects, it would be the state collecting. It's just like anything outside of the city of, outside of a city.
Okay.
There's a state sales tax, it's collected, that money is sent to the state. The state would then turn around and give it to the, well, would have the city, or the county, excuse me, and then the county and elite would then distribute the funds.
Distribute it, okay, all right. I do appreciate the part where you said that there would be no liability to the county. I think that was a big question I would have.
Right.
In a lot of different ways, that could be an issue. It's also appreciated that we, there could be some type of administration fee, so that's where it would be no, no cost to our taxpayers as a result of a facility like this. It would only improve, we talked about that visitor improvement, and, you know, getting folks coming to the area, I mean, it's...
Right, getting people to come here, and then increasing retail and the facility itself. Those will all pay property taxes. So, as you have more money coming in, right, base times rate. If the base is increased, hopefully, we can lower the rate a little bit, so we can actually lower property taxes.
Yep, no, I appreciate this, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks for this. Could you send this to us electronically, so we could have it?
Oh, man, you're asking a lot out of me. I will figure it out, yes. I will PDF it and send it to you electronically. I'll send it to all the commissioners, yes.
So, just as a little bit of background, we currently contribute to Nebraska Elite Volleyball through our Visitor Improvement Fund for over $100,000 a year. And based on that, we ask for, you know, backup, and you cited these numbers, which are good. The purpose, in part, is to bring people to Douglas County. And the attendance at these events is 50,000, with 73% of those from outside of Douglas County. So, that's a, you know, a real boost on our investment currently of the Visitors Improvement Funds. And hopefully, if we could enhance that, that would further boost us. Just a couple of informational questions or clarifications. In the new facility financial overview, you talk about estimated year-end revenues of $3.3 million, includes leases of, among others, county rental. Does that mean Douglas County rental, or just rentals of organizations?
That would be Douglas County renting the facility. That would be paid for by the sales tax turned back.
Okay.
And that would also include the use, that would also include the use of the parking lot as well, as far as the rental.
I see. On the next page, where you're outlining the turned-back tax, and I kind of want to say this is a great, I think, use of turned-back tax. The county, it says, "The act allows certain political subdivisions, such as the county, to partner with organizations." That's exactly what we're talking about here, is that right?
Yeah, it's a public-private partnership.
Okay, but the public-private partnership does not involve any, other than these grants that we do under the Visitors Improvement, any Douglas County revenues?
That is correct. Well, let me clarify, you are correct. However, because the sales tax will be turned back to the county, the county would be the one that pays for the lease, but it'd be using the turned-back dollars to pay that lease.
Right, dollars that we currently do not get.
Correct, yes.
So, we're creating new revenue for Douglas County.
Yes, that is correct.
And some of that revenue would actually remain with Douglas County after this financial...
Correct. We would, we would reserve funds for administrative fees to cover the county's cost. And in addition, if there were excess funds, work with the county to hand out these scholarships that promote youth athletics.
Okay. Do you have any estimates based on future projections of what those numbers would look like?
I'm looking to Mr. Carroll. I believe he has those numbers.
Okay.
If you want to introduce yourself and give your address, sir.
Good morning, this is Anthony Carroll, 19625 Audrey Street. Sorry I couldn't be there today, I'm down in Orlando as AAU Nationals kicks off this week, so I have to get everybody in, checked in, and ready to go. They've got a record 4,650 teams participating this year. That's just on the girls' side, there's also another 1,300 on the boys' side. As far as the estimates go, when we look at the numbers based on data we received from the companies that have purchased property around where we're going to build, our best guess right now is it's going to be somewhere between $10 and $12 million a year that would come into this fund from the 70% of the state's sales tax dollars that are collected. So, the way the program works is that we get 70% of any new sales tax dollars that are generated within the 600 yards of the property line, excluding the streets and that. So, the number, and again, it's a, it's a guestimate, because we just, you know, we're basing it on a typical Costco and a typical Fleet Farm, which will be the two of the primary tenants coming in within the 600 yards. There'll be other businesses opening within that area. So, our best guess right now is between $10 and $12 million a year would be the funds that would come into the Douglas County that would be then redistributed through the lease to cover the construction and those costs that are eligible, and then go back into the scholarship funds and grants, or whatever we decide to do as we work together on this project.
Thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good estimate to start with.
One more thing to the chairperson. Thank you very much for your compliment about my staff and our facility, I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you.
We always hear the bad stuff, we never hear the good stuff.
We're on a little bit of a time thing here, so thank you very much. On the next part of this, the new facility application process, it talks about the application includes details about the proposed project, estimated financing. Among items there is bonds. What type of bonds would be considered for this financing?
Zero, you cannot bond. So, this language here is a cut and paste of what the statute says, and the statute anticipates, because there are different...
There's no specific bond.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. The next bullet point says documentation of local financing commitment parentheses "public" and "private funds pledge." There's no public funds pledged here, right?
Zero. Again, it's the cut and paste of the statute. And this is a model, and so they just looking to anticipate what different, different ways.
And I just have one question to our finance person, Lori. Just so people know, what amount of sales tax does Douglas County currently receive?
Yeah, we don't receive any sales tax, we're property taxing.
So, this is a new source of revenue entirely for Douglas County?
Correct.
Very interested in that.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Burke, thanks for the presentation and, and I was one of the ones talking to Burke about a subcommittee meeting, and he felt like I was ghosting him. I mean, there's been a lot of things going on. But thank you for reaching out to the people and getting it organized. Hey, refresh my memory, we've talked about this on a couple of occasions, no zoning changes needed, right?
The zoning is done by the city, and we are working with the city planning.
So, you will be going to get some zoning changes after approval of the...
It's in process right now.
Okay.
And I think maybe, well, hopefully, no, no more changes.
Well, Burke, here's why I asked the question, from a, things are going to get interesting, right? So, Costco goes in at 180th Maple. Within the last year and a half or two years, 80 to 85% of the people living in Western Douglas County and Northern Douglas County are really excited to have a Costco at 180th Maple. There are two, there are two subdivisions in there, the people were not excited.
Yeah.
At all. And there were infrastructure changes, road changes, all kinds of stuff. So, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but has there been a, and has there been a thought process and a strategy in regard to marketing and communication with, with people that are in this area? Because what I passed a note to Commissioner Borgeson, like all major growth efforts, 180th, Costco, all these other things, roads and infrastructure are going to be really important.
Yeah.
The traffic's bad there right now, just wait.
Right. So, again...
So, kind of up in the air question, but I mean, what is the strategy and the communication efforts in these areas? Because some of these people in these subdivisions have no idea yet the lead volleyball's coming in there.
Okay. What I will do is take a first shot at, and I'll let Mr. Carroll fill in anything that I missed. The answer is, you're right. And as I mentioned earlier, the current facility at 200, was short on parking, right? And so, one of the things, we've been much more intentional in working with the city on how to make sure we have enough parking spaces. For a while, we even considered putting in a parking garage, but it just wasn't feasible. So, instead, what we had to do was shrink the size of the facility to meet the demands of the land, of what we could and couldn't do based on financials. We have been working with members out there, and we've been working with planning and zoning, the city, because again, we're in the extraterritorial jurisdiction, to make sure that we meet the requirements of the city. And city planning and zoning are obviously stricter than what the county has as far as planning and zoning. And we are meeting all those criterias, and continue to meet with planning and zoning, although we're very close, if not there. But if you have suggestions of things we should or should be doing, more than happy to work with you on that.
No, I appreciate that, Burke. And in no way am I trying to, you know, be like a wet blind, I mean, I...
Happy to do it.
I love this whole idea, the fact of the matter is, in 1982, when I used to drive really fast out on 168th and West Side Road, it was two lanes, and there were tree lines on each side. Go look at it now. And that's what's actually happening as we speak at 180th and Maple.
Right. We want this to be a success, and we want this to be a model for other public-private partnerships, and we don't want a black eye from upset neighbors. So, if you have suggestions of people or groups we should go and talk to, more than happy to do that.
Okay, thanks, Burke.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I'll take a quick round, myself. And this kind of partnership, private public partnership that you speak of, who becomes the owner of the facility?
The owner of the facility at all times would be the nonprofit. And then, it would be a lease between the county and that nonprofit.
Okay. And then, the county has a need to lease the facility and pay for that lease, why?
It would be open to the public. So, any individuals, and again, we'd work with the county, if you want to make it open to just citizens of Douglas County, if you want to make it, think like a municipal pool. We can make it open to anybody, or we can make it open to citizens, but it would be open from 6:00 in the morning until 4:30, 4:00, 4:30 in the afternoon for the general public.
So, the notion is that we're paying for a facility to be open to the public during a certain set of time, and we're on the hook to pay for that service?
Yeah, you would have operational control during that period. We would, what we would do, again, when I say operational control, is that's more statutory language, we would work with the county, again, or hope to work with the county, to have a third-party management, but that citizens of Douglas County would receive a benefit.
And who pays for those operational services during that time?
Well, that is what the lease is paying for.
Okay, it's not just the facility, but also the operational services?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so, the county is under this kind of notion in theory, paying for the lease of the facility during those hours, and the staffing during those hours through probably a third-party vendor or some sort of...
Yeah, so there's a full service. We provide a greater quality experience for the citizens.
Okay. So, there's, and that cost is reduced from the revenue of the return sales tax, so to speak... sales tax, so to speak.
Correct.
Okay.
Can we please mute yourselves on Zoom?
Kent Hall, mute yourself. All right. And then you also mentioned that the, the sales tax being kept also covers the construction costs? Is that?
No. It would, you would pay zero the construction. It'd be for the lease.
So the, the construction cost is covered by what again?
By the private individual who would have the ownership of it.
Okay. So the nonprofit?
Yeah.
So the nonprofit-
Elite volleyball would, yes.
Would be paying for the, the construction costs?
Yeah.
So that's kind of their, their investment?
Yes.
In the facility that's being built. We have the lease aspects. And we do the lease aspect, the operational aspect, because we're also benefiting from the tax? Or what is the because there? Because we want to provide a new service? Or what is the because there in your mind?
To provide a facility for citizens to use. As you know, there are not enough pickleball courts in this, in Douglas County right now. So we're, we're putting pickleball courts. Kids can come in and play sports, right? They can come in and practice volleyball on their own. They can practice basketball on their own. While I'm a huge fan of organized sports, I'm also a big fan of just kids getting together and playing randomly. And so you would have a facility. Currently, Douglas County doesn't have a facility. I mean, it's not part of what the county does. But now you would have a facility for kids in western Douglas County to, to play and to work out, similar to what they are available in other parts of the city. Not necessarily run by the county, but they are available.
Yeah. And when it says that the estimated year-one positive cash flow is sixty-nine thousand, is that correct?
What's that?
It says estimated year-one positive cash flow is sixty-nine thousand. Is that correct?
Yeah. If that's what it says, yes.
Is that from what's remaining of the sales tax after everything's paid for? Or?
After the lease, yes.
Okay. So sixty-nine thousand in that first year?
Yeah.
Seventy-eight thousand in the second year?
Again, that's an estimate. But yes.
Okay. I'll loop back around because my time's done. But thank you for that. We will go to Commissioner Borgerson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify that this isn't necessarily a new revenue source for us, because it's going to go right back into paying that lease. Any excess would be used to, for a program which we would then work with you to decide what that is. So this isn't like we're going to be collecting sales tax and have a new revenue source. So I just wanted-
Correct. It's a pass-through, and I-
It's a pass-through, correct?
Yes.
And then my one question I thought of was, is what happens if the sales tax ends up not being enough to pay?
Yep.
The amount. We're going to write that we have no liability, but what happens in that case with the facility in general?
That's on elite volleyball.
I'm sorry?
That is on elite volleyball. We will work with the county attorney's office to structure the lease so that revenue does not come in as projected, that that is their liability.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
And again, what, what I should say is we're collecting sales tax. It's a pass-through. But it's, it's, what's nice about it is the state's not doing a non-funded mandate, or so we can, you, you are allowed to collect administrative fees.
Commissioner Boyle?
So, and just to piggyback on what everyone else is talking about, it looks like, again, that the sales tax, that, the state sales tax, could it be applied to this is for four years? And so-
Ten, ten years.
Oh, ten years. Okay.
You get to collect two years, the, the increase in sales tax from two years before and four years, or new development, two years before and four years after.
Okay. So a, after that, what, in my mind, I'm just trying to make sure that in no way will the Douglas County taxpayers ever have to dig into the general fund in order to pay-
Exactly.
For this. And so after, you know, fifteen years from now, is that a possibility?
Yeah. No. I mean, the, the only way Douglas County would be on the hook is after the term of the lease. If for some reason the county decided to re-up that lease, but that would be the only way. But during the term of that lease, there would be zero liability to the county.
Okay. And then if they did decide to re-up the lease because it's providing all these amenities for folks in the county itself, then there could be an expense to continue the lease at that point?
Yeah.
If, and if the county decides not to renew the lease, does that mean that it just relinquishes to?
Exactly.
The rest of the volleyball?
Yes. And by that time, I'm assuming this will all be in the city of Omaha. So city of Omaha can pick it up.
Right. Thanks.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Okay. Just to clarify on this revenue point, where the estimate from your, I guess he's an accountant for you, was there would be ten to twelve million dollars of sales tax revenue generated?
Yes.
Okay. And I think there was a little confusion on whether or not Douglas County, after all of this is done, would receive any of that ten to twelve million dollars of sales tax revenue?
So, yeah.
Unobligated, receive-
It is. It is. It is. And I didn't do a very good job of explaining. So how the, the sales tax turnback works is, let's say it's ten million just for round purposes. Thirty percent or three million would go to the community CCCFF fund, which we do not receive. That goes to community development across the state. So we, we would not see that. So it's, it's now down to seven million dollars.
Off of the ten or twelve million?
Yeah, off the ten. But, yeah. But for this sake, I'm saying ten just because I'm not very mathematically. I can't do thirty percent of twelve million. So, eight. But what you would do, and then that seventy percent or seven million, assuming, again, we're applying to the governor, and in every other situation, they've given the full amount. But, and so we would assume or hope the same here. Of that seven million, you know, we would have a lease to, that would be negotiated between elite volleyball and the county. And then as part of that lease, there would also be administrative fees for the cost of processing these dollars. And then excess fees, anything in excess, we would hope would be used for marketing of youth athletics. Okay? And, and again, that's not, I mean, I shouldn't say, yeah, for not marketing, excuse me, for the enhancement and enjoyment, the promotion of youth athletics is the statutory language. Again, at, just like the visitor improvement, there is administrative costs associated with that. We would assume that the county would take administrative costs for that as well. We don't want an unfunded mandate, and so we would allow for administrative costs for that. Or I think our application would ask for that, and I think the state would recognize the importance of that.
So that portion that you're talking about, the administrative costs, would be coming to Douglas County?
Yes.
Do we have any estimate of the ten million dollars estimate? How much that would be?
You know, I would argue it should be administrative fees should be, you know, traditionally is three to five percent, somewhere in there.
And is that the extent of the actual tax revenue that, from this ten million dollar turnback would end up in Douglas County?
Yes and no, right? Because you get the indirect, because now you have new economic development, and you have new property tax values that are coming into the county.
On the development that's projected for the surrounding.
Projected development, yes. And then in addition, you have the increase in the visitor improvement, because this will put more heads in beds. For instance, the President's Weekend, it is only limited now by the number of courts available, and there will be more courts available going forward.
So the terms of this lease would determine the amount of revenue that Douglas County would actually receive?
Yeah. It would be a negotiation between the two of us. What we're really doing is the hope is just to agree that we would, a resolution that we want to apply together so that we can capture that Costco dollars, the, the development of the new store coming in. And then we would negotiate after that going forward with the state and with, or with the county for that state application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Morgan?
Uh-oh, here comes the dollar. Thank you very much for answering all the questions that have been asked. What's the total cost of that estimate? I know you don't have a bid yet.
Yeah.
But roughly, what are you figuring for the hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet at this point?
Approximately sixty million dollars.
How much?
Sixty million dollars is the last. But as you know, construction prices are all over the map right now.
So you're under four hundred dollars a foot, basically, on that figuring around three forty, thereabouts?
Yes.
Which is a good number. I, I think that number's pretty accurate.
Okay.
What you're estimating. So, and again, you've expressed that we don't have any liability, and that's important, but it's going to be a great asset for our community and for young people and so on. So thank you for the work you've done and hopefully getting it to the finish line.
Thank you. And I look forward, when we do this, to negotiating with you on the lease, because you know this better than anybody else, than everybody else in this room combined. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll take a, a second round here. So there's that ten million dollar estimate. You're saying that there's a administrative fee that might come back to the county to cover, in theory, the cost of our administrators who are kind of helping with the paperwork and overseeing this project. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then going back to the estimate of positive cash flow that you stated here, sixty-nine thousand in the first year, seventy-eight thousand in the second year, right?
Guesstimate, yes.
Is that before or after the administrative fee?
Oh, boy.
Or would I, are?
My assumption is that would be after.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Yes, it is. Yes.
Okay. Got it. And going back to the, the county leasing the facility and in theory paying for the leasing of the facility and paying for the operations of the openness of the facility, is there a model within this new statute and within your project where we help you apply for this state-sponsored program and, and model, but we don't have to invest in leasing and operating expenses, but rather just maximize the state-earned income for those, or not income, but tax, turnback tax for those first four years?
Can you reword that? I'm not quite sure I understand what you're saying.
Is there a way to configure this, where we help you apply for this?
Yeah.
Through state and help you launch this project, but we, as the county, don't necessarily have to lease the space nor pay for the operations of the space during those open hours?
Good question.
Rather, we maximize the turnback tax that the, the county gets and ideally decides how to use those funds on our end at that point?
As much as I would like it to be what you asked, it is not possible. So the way our state constitution works is you cannot give money directly from a nonprofit, or excuse you, from the state to a nonprofit. So it has to, it, it would go to the county, and the county has to receive something of value from that nonprofit for a governmental purpose. Whatever the, you know, and, and that is governmental purpose varies. The governmental, the duties and responsibility or governmental purpose for a city and a county do vary, right? And, and other political subdivision. So you have to receive something of value, and you have to have what's referred to as operational control. So that's why we have the lease and, and then also receive something of value. And so that's why we, we have to have that lease, we have to have the lease period for you.
Yeah.
And that benefit, obviously, is to use the facilities and the parking.
Got it. Thank you. That, that helps explain kind of the, the state perspective as far as the law and what it requires. I'm just wondering all of that, because, you know, if at the end of the day, you know, the, the positive cash flow is just sixty-nine thousand, we might get some of that prior to the positive cash flow through administrative fees, but in theory, that's covering like the time that Lori or Teresa or anybody else has to take, you know, to, to manage this paperwork and the, the financial oversight, et cetera. So, you know, on the one hand, developments in our county, including the rural areas in western Douglas County, is by all means a very positive thing. I want to see more development in rural Douglas County. On the other hand, you know, I'm looking at, you know, the pitch of like, the county will get some revenue back, but I guess I, I want to see some clarification in exactly what is the, the reciprocal kind of mutual benefit there, because it's a little bit fuzzy still for me, but I can follow up and ask some questions.
Love to talk to you. And again, we can, the administrative fee is negotiable. If you feel it doesn't cover the cost, we can make it a larger percentage, but we, obviously, it's negotiable.
Yeah. Got it. Thank you. I might have one more question, but first I'll go to Commissioner Morgan.
I'll use my second part of this. I'm not sure the mic's working, but for Graham Lorenz, who graduated from Notre Dame, you stayed at this meeting celebrating your dad's retirement. You'll have an interesting ride home, because I can tell by your dad's body language that he'd be asking a lot of questions right now and telling us some things. So it's interesting to have you sitting here, Joe, listening to this. And I know what's running through your mind, having known you the last thirteen-plus years. So thanks again for the presentation very much.
Thank you. He is a St. Ed's guy, and I was Morris, Assistant Director at Morrissey, so I'm not sure how much Graham knows. At Notre Dame, your resident halls are like your fraternities and so.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. I'll take a final third and two-minute round, just to ask one question. Or rather, make a, a public honest statement in regards to, you know, as far as the, the turnback revenue or tax that would come back to the county, you know, whether it's something along the lines of sixty-nine thousand or something much greater than that. I'm not sure. We'll get clarification on that. But I personally would not want to just give that out to sports scholarships. If, I think a part of the mutual reciprocal benefit here is that somehow the county can invest in something that we deem is, is needed for those funds, if the state law allows it. Like, for example, our Jack Center is looking to increase funds to contract more providers in the community to serve youth that are at risk or at the risk of possibly entering the juvenile justice system or, or being diverted from getting there. And, you know, we, we can use a robust system to have providers doing that and grow that system. So, you know, I would rather steer funding in that direction versus just more sports scholarships, and that's just me being honest. So does the state law allow the county to use it for whatever they have, deem appropriate, or does it have to go related to the projects somehow?
You nailed it on the head. And I, we were scheduled to meet on Wednesday, and so I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to talk to you ahead of time. So the way it works is it can be used for the leases that we talked about. There are set what the funds can be used for, and that would not be allowed to go to the Jack. But it can, again, go for the promotion of youth athletics.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a good clarification.
The statute is limited to what it could go to, so it could not go to the Jack unless, again, it's related to the promotion of youth athletics, which I would argue some of this is because it creates better mental and behavioral health for our young kids.
Sure. The mutual benefit, I'm seeing less and less, but I, I'll follow up with some more questions. And I do appreciate the clarification, so they are very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, this was a strictly informational presentation. Larry, go ahead.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm against this. Now, you may not like what I say, but I have a right to say it. When I started in sales work many, many years ago, we were trained by people like Bart Starr, the Green Bay Packers' famous coach, Vince Lombardi, the famous vacuum cleaner salesman, dare-to-be-great Glenn Turner. And this was not one of those kind of presentations, but he's dropping the pen for you guys to sign. Okay. Now, I'm going to ask you to open your minds to the citizen's way of hearing this or thinking about it, not your way. Stop the legalistic terms and stuff and think of it this way, please. Very simple. There was a cartoon where a wimpy used to say, "I'll gladly pay you today for a, tomorrow for a cheeseburger today." Forty-eight months or forty-eight years, four years, whatever. Public partner, public-private partnership basically means, out of my billfold somehow, because you're the public partnership. Now, this gets passed sometime later. You come up with an amendment, or it comes back because, oh, they're, they're need more revenue and et cetera. That comes out of my pocket. What also comes out of my pocket, and probably is already, is the tax-free status, 501(c)(3). That costs me. That costs every citizen. So it's not, it's not free. That costs me, that costs every citizen, so, it's not, it's not free. The big picture, however, is, if you're paying attention to the news, governments all over this country are going to fail because they're having to bail out all the illegals and homeless people across this country. This is going to fail because you won't have the ability to get more money, because I'm not going to have it. I can't afford the increase in my evaluation on my property tax. I can't buy a house for what he's telling me my house sells for, should sell for, or somebody similar in the neighborhood paid for. I can't buy another house for that, because I'm retired. I can't afford to pay any more taxes, so where am I going to go? Douglas County poorhouse? I don't know. But this needs, you need to be, think about, the money will not be there. Nothing will be there to turn back. Now, why turn back? Is this a replacement for TIF? This sounds a lot like TIF. Somebody else finances my business, why would I not? Because it may not get billed if I don't, and I want the money in my billfold. Put this on hold so we can visit with Topgolf about this. We need all this stuff? The general public hasn't been able to read this yet. They don't know that it's for kids and charity, but they can also rent it out to other groups and things for profit. Nonprofit, they say, but I don't believe that. And will the state actually turn back to, oh, they were just talking about reducing my tax, but they're going to raise it through sales taxes, all the way from the state level down to the city. We're losing, but when this country goes broke, they're going to go broke, and you're going to go broke, so maybe you shouldn't do this yet, till we straighten this country out. Better wait till after the election, maybe, okay?
That's time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry, we'll go to a third round, Commissioner Borgson, his two-minute round.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just for process purposes, the information would come back to the board for, with a resolution for us to act upon it on the 25th, again, because of the timeline. And, again, I just want to end this on a positive note, that I do think that this is a benefit for both Elite and County, but mostly for the kids in which the facility would serve. Again, being involved in sports with all of my children, now my grandkids, which I know a lot of you are as well, the need is there, and as Burke was saying earlier, that it does have a positive impact on what kids do, other than being on their phones or computers or out causing trouble, so, there's a lot of positives for this. And, again, to write the agreement so that the county has no liability, I'm comfortable with that, and, again, the state is giving us a vehicle to which we can partner with a group like Elite to do something fantastic for residents of Douglas County, and so, I hope that any, anything we do is that we move it forward, so, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments on this presentation? If not, thank you very much for coming today, appreciate it.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Chair, may I ask a question?
Go ahead, yes.
Thank you so much, and I apologize, Burke, I don't know, under the statute, if this facility is, are you guys thinking of it as a sports complex or as a sports arena, and I just asked that question because I see some differences in the statute based upon, you don't have to answer today,
Yeah.
but if you would think about it and wouldn't mind getting back to me, that would be tremendous, because I would appreciate that, it will help orient me in the statute.
Yep, it will be a sports complex.
Okay.
Yeah, and I use the terms intermittently, and I apologize.
Oh, no, no, no issue there, I just know in the statute there's some differences, and so, I want to, it'll help me, it'll help me immensely, so, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, all right, thanks again.
Thank you.
Next on agenda, we have item, or section five, public hearing, we have one public hearing today under item A, I know I'm going to make, state the last name incorrectly, so apologies in advance, but we have a request was received from Nick Seitschlag of Thompson, Dreeson, Dorner, on behalf of Mark and Sherry Connor, for a farmstead lot split of a property located at 26060 F Streets, so, if you'd like to start us off.
Good morning, Commissioners, Laura Dietrich, Planning and Zoning Coordinator. Okay, there we go, thank you so much. That's pretty blurry, I apologize. All right, we received a request from Thompson, Dreeson, Dorner, on behalf of Mark and Sherry Connor, for a farmstead lot split at 26060 F Street. I'm just going to offer a little kind of background into this. Typically, with a farmstead lot split, we separate out the existing farmstead from the agriculture, the agricultural part of the parcel, and we will be doing that here, we won't be rezoning, and we will not be creating an additional building lot. One of the things that the family would like to do with this parcel, the part that already has the homestead on it, the owner, Carolyn Manjamelli, passed away last year, and her husband currently lives in the home. Mark and Sherry Connor plan to put a second home so that he can stay there and live as long as he would like. Part of the reason he's allowed to do that is because we passed the ADU regulation last year, which will give this gentleman the opportunity to age in place for as long as he would like. Planning Commission heard this at their May 15 meeting and recommended approval. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, any questions on this item? Commissioner Borgson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a comment that I just think this is an awesome thing, and knowing that, that he will be able, as you said, to age in place for as long as he wants is exactly the progress we want to make for, for our folks in Douglas County, and so, this is, I think, will be a good example of how we can do things as we move forward, so, great project.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle?
Just a quick question, why does the lot need to be split in order to accomplish that?
So, the land right now is held in a trust, and there's multiple children involved in this, in the trust issue, or I shouldn't say issue, with the trust, and they wanted to split the land between the three of them, and this was one way to be able to accomplish that, was through a farmstead lot split.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, any other questions or comments on this item? If not, we can take action today. Oh, yeah, did I say the words, "open the public hearing"? Mr. Clerk, I don't recall.
You did not, but you did, you read the item, so I took that as the opening.
Very good, that was indeed the opening, when I read the item. I shall close the public hearing now, I believe there was a motion by Commissioner Borgson, and a second by? Second by Friend, all right.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, and to clarify, this is a motion to approve the request.
Correct.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
It's Seitschlag.
Oh, Seitschlag. Thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, next, we have committees, discussion and action. Under Finance, we have Budget Report as presented, and then, under Human Resources, we have the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service, also as presented, and we do have one resolution under Human Resources. It is a resolution approving an amendment to section 5.6 of the Douglas County Retirement Plan to remove the spousal penalty for members who retire after the effective date of this resolution. Do you have a motion and second for discussion? Motion by Friend, is there a second? Second by Boyle, all right, discussion on this item. Commissioner Borgson?
Chair, I'm not going to support this, and people will say that it has a very minimal effect on our pension plan, but I have voted for a change in our pension plan that did have an effect, and I regret that vote to this day, and so, anything that has any inkling of a detrimental effect to the pension plan, I'm not going to support. Plus, I don't think, I mean, I believe, from what my understanding is, is that this is a very small, minute group of individuals, and it's not even for the employee themselves, and so, I have a little bit of a problem with taxpayers having to foot the bill for that. So, I think we are very generous for what we do provide to an employee's spouse, and I just, I'm just very nervous about making any changes to our pension plan that would have a detrimental effect at any range, so.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I was just wondering if anyone can project budgetary impact on this particular item, if approved?
I think the impact was rather minimal, under the first calculation, and Glenn, if I might call you here, it was initially $162,000 would be the negative impact of the plan, and I think under the recalc, it's like $50,000, $55,000, so, when you're talking, you know, hundreds of millions in the plan, it's not terribly material. Thanks.
Commissioner Kevin, though?
Oh, do we have somebody here from the retirement committee? I was loath to call on Joe as one of his last public pronouncements, but as a longtime member of the retirement committee, I wondered if he would like to weigh in on this.
Yeah, we've looked at it, and, you know, there's a financial impact, which I think Glenn's going to talk about, which really is de minimis in terms of, you know, a plan that might be $400 million, we're talking probably in the $100,000 range, and the other issue that we dealt with on the pension committee is the, this provision, and I personally believe this is inequitable, in the fact that if someone's spouse is five years younger or more, they get penalized, but at the same point, if someone's spouse would be five years older or more, they're not granted a credit, so it's only kind of a one-way test. So, there was that equity argument that, that to me, was probably, given the de minimis amount of the financial impact, was really why, when I voted, I voted in favor of this in the pension committee.
Thank you. I don't know if this gentleman would like to add to that, but it seems to me reasonable. I don't know, are we waiting for a motion on this?
There's a motion and second, it's just discussion at this point.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, anything else?
Good morning, Commissioners, my name's Glenn Gayhan, I'm a pension actuary with Hubbard International, and serve as actuary for the Douglas County Pension Plan, and I was just going to, you'll be here to answer any questions, but when we did the analysis, we gathered data from the county of the employees, and about 15% of employees indicated that they had spouses that were five or more years younger, and so, we ran the analysis and projecting the amount of increase in liabilities to the plan if that penalty was eliminated for those whose spouses were more than five years younger. And based on the data, the average of those that had spouses more than five years younger, it was almost nine years, was the average, that's what we assumed in our analysis. It increased the plan's present value, future benefits, so the liability that we'd want to fund for today, $162,000, which was less than, it was like 0.026%, a very small amount of the total liability being over $600 million for the plan, so, in our, my opinion, it'd be an immaterial financial impact to the plan. That being said, it does increase the liability a little bit, and based on the rounding, it decreased, it decreased the plan's funded percentage by 0.1%, but that, you know, somewhat of a rounding issue there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners and folks that are generally interested, I appreciate Joe's input on this or the thought process, and I appreciate Commissioner Borgson's, some of the institutional knowledge that she, the light that she shined on it. If it was minimal effect, there's going to be an effect on this pension program. If it was minimal, great, but we've all acknowledged this is going to be an effect, but I think what outweighs that, I mean, here's where I stand, you guys can take it with, for what it's worth, the current way this is being done, one could argue that it's not really correct. It's not, it's not fundamentally, fundamentally correct, one can make that argument. From a practical standpoint, one could argue that it's unfair, and then, if you, if you make the argument that it's unfair, and if you're promoting that type of inequity, then it ultimately generally promotes a liability problem, and you know what happens when there's a liability problem? You have 10 attorneys waiting at your doorstep. I love attorneys. No, I think, I think what you need to do is try to provide and drive, my argument is to drive that equity, and if it's inequitable, let's fix it, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, other comments on this item? Commissioner Borgson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I was just curious, because, you know, over the years, this has been brought up, and my understanding was the pension committee just basically said no in the past, so, how, what was the latest this was brought up again? Does anybody know? Like, a month ago, a year ago, two years ago?
Joe Lorenz, yeah, being on the pension committee, it was brought up, but the pension committee has been considering a series of amendments to update this plan, and this was brought up, and there were a lot of questions about it, and that's when the pension committee requested that Glenn, the actuary, take a look at this and quantify it, and then it was quantified and brought to the pension committee, and then a vote was taken where the motion to make this amendment was passed at the last pension committee meeting last month.
Was it unanimous?
It was not unanimous, say, can anyone remember?
It was three to two with two abstentions. No, I, yeah, three to, three to two, I believe, with two abstentions.
If I may, I believe it was five yeses, three noes, two abstentions, and one absentee.
Yes, that sounds right. Just, Commissioner Morgan, go ahead.
And I was an abstention, because it would apply to me because of my wife being five years younger, so, that's why I didn't make any comments and abstained, and will abstain today when the vote's taken.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan, I'm iron briefly, I'm a little bit, little bit torn, I think I might abstain because of that tornness. I do agree philosophically that nobody should be punished if their spouse is more than five years older than them, so, I agree with that notion, at the same time, I also see the point that, you know, anything that could worsen our liability at the pension is not a good thing, though, I also see the point that it's a very minimal hit of about .02, is that correct, Glenn? Point, point one?
Yeah, .02%.
Okay. Okay. So, I understand that it is quite minimal, though also, we want to see it, you know, positively impacted until we reach that eighty percent or more, right? So, I'm a little bit torn in between those two things myself, so that might be why I may abstain. Commissioner Boyle?
Similarly, I'm, I'm torn for those exact reasons. There's the, the part of me that thinks we should be standardizing things, and so, to, to make it equitable, as, as Commissioner Friend had said. At the, at the same time, this, um, in my opinion, this probably won't be very popular, but I think the supplying pensions to spouses, that whole thing, I mean, what other industry does that happen? You know, so, to me, the entire pension plan needs to be addressed. I mean, even if we cut the sixty percent down to fifty percent that the spouse receives, that would be a huge savings. And so, so for equity, I would support it. For cost, I would not. So, it's, it's really a troubling, I think the whole pension plan needs to be looked at much tighter because it seems to be a, a, a deep, a, a deep hit to the budget at times. So, and it's one of those things, in any industry that has a pension or any organization that does, funding the pension seems to be an, a, a huge problem to help meet the bottom line. Look at, you know, car company, GM, and all that. So, that's, I, I don't want to see Douglas County get into a situation like that.
Thank you. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're, we're, um, we're going down a rabbit hole, and that, and that's okay. We're supposed to do that, I guess. I could, I can, I can say that if we get drug into the idea that we're actually going to compare and contrast, and I've, and I've been doing this for a long time. You compare and contrast when you go through budgets, when you go historically through budgets, when you go through paying individuals, when you go through collective bargaining, when you go through all these type of things. Over the years, what I've seen is, we, we have politicians like myself and everybody else stand up and say, "We need to operate like the private sector." "We need to actually account like the private sector." Folks, that all sounds great, but it's virtually impossible, and I'll tell you why. Because the laws that apply to governmental subdivisions, states, federal government, gov- local government of subdivisions do not apply, and they're totally different than what would apply in the private sector. Now, that being said, we have pension systems in governmental subdivisions. We have pension systems at the state. We have pension systems at the federal government, and we have a social security system in this country that operate in almost the same absolute way that this pension system operates, with a few differences in the way Douglas County wants to operate them. First National Bank, when I was there in nineteen ninety-five, decided, "We're getting rid of this defined benefit package." You know what they did? They moved the 401Ks. We cannot make these comparisons. We, we recruit people to Douglas County because of a pension system that we have, and the equity based on that pension system has to be understood and communicated in a clear and concise manner. This particular section, five point six, is not clear and concise. It's con- it's confusing. When I, when I die, my wife gets my social security. What are we, what are we doing? When I die, I don't think, um, the same thing would apply, the same, when I die. I keep talking about when I die. Well, it's going to happen. The, the bottom line is, you can't compare Google and, and Oracle and everybody else to this because they're not going to apply it in the same manner. So, anyway, enough of my rant. I, I ju- I just think if we have an opportunity to clear up confusion, and, and this is confusing. Based on the way governmental subdivisions operate, I think this is a small opportunity to do that. If we don't, I think there's potential liability, is my opinion. But I also think everybody's going to go, "Well, it's not the way the federal government does it," and that's certainly not the way the state does it, and it's not the way Sarpy County does it. Because that's what all of our employees are going to compare themselves to. So, anyway, um, that's my take. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll jump to Commissioner Morgan.
Glenn? I just wanted to be clear when you said that, because I know you were asked to get the numbers.
Yeah.
That's based on, it's less than, I think, two tenths or one tenth of one percent, I think, was your number, something like that. Am I correct? Just so, you know, you throw percentages, not you, but we all do.
Well, yeah.
But it's less one tenth or two tenths of one percent. Am I correct? That you stated before in here?
Yeah, the, the, the plan liability is six hundred and seven million dollars. This provision in our analysis increased it one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, and I think that was zero point zero two six percent of an increase.
Zero two tenths of one percent?
Yes.
I just wanted to be sure that was clear, that we're not talking about two percent?
No.
Or those kind of numbers?
Correct.
Thank you. We'll jump to Commissioner Borgeson for our third round, two-minute round.
I just want to clarify, as we're speaking about the minimal effects, that the current way this works is that if the spouse is more than five years younger than the member, the sixty percent, which again is what the, the amount people get, is reduced by one time, one percent times the number of years by the spouse's age is less than the member's age, not counting the first five years. So, again, to me, if you want to look at it the opposite way, there's minimal effect on that calculation. So, again, my, I, I probably do agree that it should be this way, but I, I am not going to, no matter what amount it is, to make a detrimental effect to our pension plan, especially when we have to go down to the state every year and be in front of a, a panel telling them what are, why our percentage is less than that eighty percent, and now, we're telling them, "Yeah, well, we made this, even though it was minimal, we made this change." That then knocks it not, doesn't help us get to that eighty percent. So, anyway, it's just a, a personal thing I have about any, any change to the pension. I feel like I got burnt the first vote I took on my changing a pension plan and learned my lesson very well, so.
Thank you. Any other comments on this matter? If not, there's a motion on table to approve the resolution before us, and we'll go ahead and vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Borgeson voting no. Commissioners Morgan and Garcia abstaining. All other Commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move on here. We do have a need for executive session for neighbor nego- or, excuse me, labor negotiations. I do want to also mention that the Board of Commissioners will not be meeting next week, Tuesday, June eighteenth, but rather, our next meeting is Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, the following Tuesday. With that being said, do we have a motion and second for executive session?
Chair, if I may, I apologize, Tracy, your county attorney's office, would you also add legal advice, too?
And legal advice as well.
Yes, please, thank you.
Do we have a motion for executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, motion by Morgan, second by Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes, seven to zero.
Thank you. The Board will now go into executive session for the purposes of labor negotiations and legal advice.
Motion passes seven zero. We're adjourned at eleven fifty AM.
(Music)